I call the meeting to order. First item of business is public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, come to the podium, you know, state your name and address, address your comments to the board and on your public and you have 30 minutes. Nobody? I'm number three. Budget public hearing. I open the public hearing. Would you like to talk a little bit?
About the budget?
Yeah. I'll talk a little bit about it.
So as it stands right now, the operating, the proposed operating budget is four million, three hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred fifty-six dollars, which represents a five point two one percent increase over the current year. These numbers reflect the ABC's recommendation for the budget.
And if anybody needs their copies up front, if you don't have them?
Probably the two biggest costing freeze drivers in this budget are the proposed new full-time police officer and the proposed new full-time firefighter.
Does anyone have? No there in the back. Does anyone have anything they'd wish to say? This is the opportunity where the public speak. Right there, Mr. Mayor.
Larry Kinberg, chairman of the REC Commission. Last time we met, I raised a concern about the increased amount going to ORYA of what the recreation commission had recommended. I'd just like to bring you up to date as to some additional information that I've received regarding, regarding our concerns. I have spoken with the town of Durham and it has been confirmed that the town of Durham is dropping their contribution to eleven thousand dollars this year and dropping it to zero next year. I've also been in touch with Eric Wagenbaum of Medbury. They are still working on their budget, no decisions have been reached, but the, they are very concerned too about the amount of monies that are going to ORYA. I have spoken to Tom Murdock, he and I had several conversations regarding this and their recommendation. And he indicated to me after we discussed this of his concern of twenty-eight thousand dollars being told by ORYA taxpayer money. One of the suggestions that we discussed was the possibility of keeping that money under town control. The rationale, as I understood, it had to do with increased fees to the children of Lee that used their programs. The age band that ORYA is operating in is between four and eight, eighteen, and the bulk of that is between six and twelve-year-olds. That's a very small group of money, or small group of people that are receiving a large taxpayer benefit, which seems lopsided within the whole scheme of the recreation concept for the town of Lee. Getting back to Medbury, their, their concern is the same as ours with regard to that. And they're a little bit different situation than Lee and Durham. But I just wanted to let you know the direction that the other two towns are leaning towards. And again, it is our recommendation that, that you go back to our recommendation of the funding of ten thousand dollars to them. One of our biggest concerns has to do with their finances and looking over their financials. There was an audit done, I have a copy of it here. It's not very clear on it. I've spoken to others that have looked at it also, and it doesn't seem to be very clear. They have revenues of approximately six hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. Out of those revenues, about seventy-nine thousand dollars comes from the public gold subsidy contributions from the town. Looking at some of the expenses, they've got salaries of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for three people. And I'm told by members of ORYA that basically the volunteers run the entire programs, their coaches are not paid, so they have that salary expense there. They have another line item called management and administrative services of thirty-three thousand dollars. And again, in speaking with Tom Murdock, they asked some of these questions and he indicated to me that they didn't get clear answers to these, such as Durham, Todd Sellycombe and the same thing, that they weren't getting clear answers either. So again, having to do with the dropping of funding with regard to that. They have a line item for professional services of thirty-one thousand dollars, which is basically bookkeeping. I own a company that, much larger than this nonprofit, and my bookkeeping and accounting fees are a fraction of that. So again, it raises a lot of questions. Where the, where is the money going? And these are questions that I believe that people here in town will ask before spending thirty, twenty-eight thousand dollars. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Luke?
Luke Rondon, fourteen hour lane energy committee. And yeah, here to talk about the blue door test. I think he sent out.
It's about the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're on your agenda.
I saw that, I'm next. That's why I thought you said.
Sorry, no.
No, 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 we're still doing the budget.
That's me. The other two are done.
Wish to speak up to the budget? No?
No.
Nobody? Okay. Either Sleckman, have any, no?
Any discussion about the budget?
Well, public discussion, question discussion.
Well, my recommendation would be to leave the public hearing open because if you were, for example, to increase or add any items to the budget, they have to be disclosed in a public hearing. So I believe that the select board's discussion should take place within the public hearing.
That, if you two have anything you'd like to say?
Well, actually, I'd like to go through each area section by section. I think that'd be this way. That way we can follow through and keep any questions coming up.
I think it's dark, because half the lights are, half the lights are on. Thank you.
Wow, man, now he can see.
Why can't I see?
Let there be light.
I think that was something the energy committee shut them off. I think that.
I think they're trying to save some money here.
All right, let's go section by section. Anything in the Sleckman's office or Sleckman's office?
The only comment I would have about that is that I recommend increasing the forest and supply line because that's where we have been funding some DCDC expenses. So if you have any thoughts for what those expenses might be, that's where the DCDC is from.
Well, right now, the board gave us two thousand, I think we spent nothing so far. There'll be some expenses for the open house, but not close to that. And then it also depends on what happens in the vote, so. Anything?
Nothing, nothing in there.
No? No. Lexington registration?
No.
No?
Town clerk tax return?
No.
Nope?
No.
Financial administration? Nope? Okay. Financial administra, what is that, like computer services?
Financial IT, yes.
All right, so IT, financial administration, IT? Anything in there?
No, cutting that, good.
Assessing?
No.
Legal expenses? No?
Can we talk just about legal for a minute? I would expect, let me, just, just a second. I'm trying to work the words. I would expect that our legal fees would go down next year, given some of the past events that occurred. Am I, am I wrong in thinking that?
We still have a couple things.
If you recall, when I did my budget presentation, I decreased mine because the majority of those expenses came out of my line item. So my line item has been reduced.
Okay.
Because of those issues that were resolved.
Okay, all right.
But it hasn't been singled out because there's other issues coming along.
I understand. Thank you. Cause, planning is, I went from thirty to twenty-five?
I believe so, really.
All right. Anything in legal? Good?
No.
Personnel?
No, that's, that is.
Nope?
No, nothing.
Planning and zoning? Nothing?
Nothing.
Government buildings?
No, I guess. No.
No? Cemetery?
No.
Nope? Are we gonna talk about anything tonight?
Well, you've got something to talk about.
Okay. Insurance, property liability?
No, I haven't any control over that. No.
Government other? That fifty thousand is really the salary increase pool that the board will consider? If that's what that is? Nothing?
I might consider dropping that to thirty-five thousand.
Okay. Mr. Brown, you're good?
Okay.
Police department?
Hold on, please. I was gonna talk to, about the overtime. I'm glad that the police chief is here.
Yeah.
And I was considering dropping that by ten thousand dollars since you do have another officer. You wanna speak to that?
Are you talking about the officer that I put in for? The part-time officer? And I'm going to try to make a full-time officer. I, I reduce my overtime by ten thousand in this budget to compensate for that.
And just for clarification, in year nineteen, it was running about thirty-one thousand, and then twenty went up to forty thousand.
Yep.
And now you're going back to thirty thousand.
Yep.
But before that, it was running, well, a couple years before that, it was twenty thousand. But we've had new police officers since then.
Correct, but we're also much busier. And as of right now, I ran the budget this morning, and I'm at fifty-one percent spent on overtime right now. I don't, it was an increase because in the past, we never had enough overtime in the budget to cover all the vacations that were available. So that's where we're at now.
Okay. Anything else in the police department?
No.
The only concern I have, which will come also in fire department, is we're adding two new salaried people.
Right.
And that's my concern in terms of the benefits that are associated with those two positions, so.
Do you want to talk about specific costs for those two new positions, or do you?
If you can refresh our memories, I know the fire department was about eighty.
Fire department, eighty-two thousand, four hundred and two. Again, that's based on planning for, budgeting for a family plan for the health insurance. And the police, the new police officers, eighty-nine, six, eighty-eight.
Chief? So, were you saying it's an additional eighty-nine, six, eighty-eight? Because we're already taking close to forty thousand out of my budget to put towards that.
Okay.
So.
I'm saying the cost of a police officer is estimated to be?
But that's not the actual cost because there's already monies in my budget to pay for most of his salary or her salary.
So the?
The increase would be to the?
The forty-six thousand?
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions in the department?
Not at all. We need, we need the full-time, we need the full-time firemen, we need full-time police, there's no doubt about it. That's my opinion.
But nothing else in police department? No, nothing?
No.
Dispatch?
No.
Ambulance?
No.
Fire department?
I have the same concern, need to police and fire. What type personnel? Beyond that, particular plot?
No? Code enforcement?
No.
Can I ask a question? This is more of a technical question.
Why does it keep?
Yeah, why is it keep going back and forth? What's the, what's the scoop of that?
I think that's a tired coding issue.
I just assume it's misplace.
Which one should it be? The top one or the bottom?
I think it's the full-time building.
It's full-time building, I'm sure.
Okay. Can we tweak that?
Make it legal?
Yep.
All right. Anything in code enforcement? You all set?
I'm good.
EOC?
No, no change.
Good. Highway department? He's not looking very happy back there.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Go ahead.
I'm gonna back up to EOC for a second. The four thousand dollars for supplies, where does, where does that, where does that go for supplies to the EOC?
Aaron or the chief?
Yeah. I want this.
We tend to hold on to it towards the end of the year because we use it for any emergencies that we do have in town. We purchase food with it in the past, we purchased the cots, blankets, supplies for the Red Cross shelter that we have here. So we've kind of waited to see if we have an emergency, to use the funds for that. And if we don't, then we spend it at the end of the year to increase the supplies that we do need in the future.
All set? Highway?
Good.
All set, Mr. Brown?
Yeah.
Transfer station?
I'm okay, I just wanna make sure.
Okay.
We moved a part-time to a full-time.
Yep. That was last year?
Yes.
Last time?
Beginning of this year.
Beginning of this?
Beginning of this fiscal year.
Fiscal year, okay.
Okay.
Solid waste?
I have some concerns that we might not have enough money budgeted for hauling.
Okay.
Mr. Bullock thinks he can find it somewhere else, I think he actually costs it for thirty-four or thirty-five thousand dollars.
I don't disagree that we might be a little low on that number, especially with the increased refuse coming out of the transfer station. And last meeting, I went over that proposal for the roll-off truck. And some of that hauling that she's referring to, I think, is also included in prices that we currently pay to get rid of things. So it isn't one fee. So like the scrap metal, they just, we get paid for it, but they just take the hauling fee out before they send us the money. But it, I think it probably is a little bit low.
Do you want to go back and give us a new number next time, or?
I can, I can try. I know that we've done pretty good consolidating, packing the cans a little bit tighter than they have in the past, so we're averaging, I think, three to four tons more per trip than we were in the past. So instead of eight trips a month, we might be making six. Or in the busy times in the summer, instead of ten, we're making eight. So we're doing a little bit better on that front, to try to reduce it. And we're doing two hauls at once.
The tandem?
So, yeah, so if I have an MSW can that goes out, and I have a C and D bin, or can at the same time, and making one trip instead of two. And they reduce the price because it's one trip instead of two.
Talk about for the next time, for the thirteen?
Yeah.
Will you provide us a number for?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll go through it all again.
Anything else in solid waste?
No.
If anybody has any questions in the audience when we're going through these things, just slide me down. Southeast Watershed Alliance, they didn't make a request, so we didn't include it, right? Animal control?
No problems.
Health agencies?
Not much control on that, actually.
The only one I would like to have us take a look at is the homeless shelter of Sarafiri County. They went up quite a thousand dollars. I don't know, have we sent anybody any there lately?
I wouldn't know.
Is that something we can find out?
I'm gonna try to find out.
General assistance?
No change.
Uh, any in the section? Two sections?
Only two sections.
Yeah, well, one's the salary part of it, and the other one's the assistance itself?
No change.
Nothing? Oyster River Youth?
Reduced to fifteen K.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah. As for the rental assistance?
No, no, no.
Or parts and recreation?
Parts and recreation.
Did you have something in rental assistance, or?
I have one.
Oh.
I'm, I'm still looking at the rental assistance.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry.
Are you good? Are you okay with?
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay. And parts and recreation, Oyster River Youth? Still, of course, is suggested fifteen, that is ten thousand.
Okay. We're going to, you know, Mr. Kinberg stood up and talked about Oyster River. What, what do we need to do to resolve it? It goes on and on, you know, issues with Oyster River, do we have issues, do we don't have issues, are they worth the money, aren't they worth the money? In my view, with what they provide, they're, they're worth the money. And the only reason I say that is because I think, I think overall, we're doing exactly what we need to be doing. Oyster River, along with the other, along with schools, provide really a path for contact sports for the, for the children to get involved and learn and so on. Recreation Department and Lee fills those gaps with, with great things. You know, where do kids go to learn to catch a fish? They, they come to, when you look at what happens when we have our, our fishing derby, we even have a policeman out there helping them, teaching them how to bait a hook. And, and I mean, it's, it's great. Look at what we've done, what you've done with the, with the recreation department, the model rockets. I'm sure that we'll get a drone program going. We're filling those gaps for children that don't want to do contact sports. You know, they, they have other things they want to do, and we give them a path to do it. We teach them these things. So, yeah, look at the turnout for model rocket day, it's fantastic and it's fun. And they're out there with the parents and they're building rockets and shooting them and so on. So, you know, we, we keep having this kind of a face-off with Oyster River. And I think, well, we, we just need to decide that there, you know, if there's an issue between us and Oyster River, we need to get Oyster River in here, ask those same questions that Larry and Laura want, and, and get it resolved and put it behind us. We've been talking about Oyster River for two years, all because of some, some comment that was started off in a, in a argument in a bar somewhere. Come on. We, we need to get that behind us.
Well, just, the request to us this year, I believe, was forty-six thousand.
Six thousand dollars.
They were definitely not fully, well, asking, giving them what they asked for. I believe they asked Durham for seventy-two.
Right.
And Mr. Kinberg beginning eleven.
Yeah, they're asking for forty-eight, six, seventies.
There you go.
So I'm asking you down to fifteen, okay? And what I would like to do is add somebody to Park and Recreation to see if we could bolster some new activities.
Yes, absolutely. We talked about.
So we'll take from one and we'll just put it in the other and we'll watch it.
We talked about starting a pickleball program, we, we, you know, I think that there's a lot of things we can do in our recreation department to even grow those things we do. But what we're doing is filling the gaps between the contact sports, and, you know, not all kids want to play football and all that other stuff.
True.
They need other paths, and we're giving them those paths in addition to the fact, I mean, look what happened when we started the music in the park, you know? The first, first night of music in the park was a disaster. And, and we never thought it was gonna grow. And now we've got, you know, senior citizen buses showing up, we're cooking, we're cooking food on the grills, we're, we're doing some really, really, really neat things, and that's what we, I think that's what we need to be doing.
That written, that speaks to our REC program, but what about the Oyster River Youth Association? Are you in concurrence to drop it to fifteen?
Yeah, I think we, you know, we, I think maybe we need to invite them in here again and ask some of these questions and then make a decision.
How about if we ask the town minister, ask Mr. Bullock to attend the meeting on the thirteenth? And see if he can attend. If he can't attend, you should send somebody because?
Yeah.
The board is contemplating reducing their funding. All set?
On that.
Anything else in recreation?
No.
I was consisting, maybe adding ten K if we drop the Oyster River down to have the recreation committee come up with some kind of mission, perhaps some plan of how they would use the funds to help some of the people. They might be wanting to do contact sports and get disenfranchised because of the reduction of the Oyster Beach Association.
Could we ask the REC committee to think about that? I don't know, you guys don't meet until, until much late?
If I can make a suggestion, I hate to say this, but we don't need more money this year? Okay. What we're trying to do is see a balance, like Carrie, you were saying, between those, the children of those taxpayers of Lee that are benefiting from programs through ORYA. Our opinion is that ORYA, this whole situation with ORYA is kind of upside down in the way it's set up. If you take a look around the state, there are other sports organizations that are nonprofits that work within the REC commissions, through the REC commissions and so on through the state. They all pay to utilize the fields. Right now, we build the fields, we maintain the fields, and we pay ORYA a large amount of money to basically manage themselves to use our facilities at the exclusion of other organizations that also want to use our facilities and pay us for the use of those facilities. Uh, yes, we have had some issues with the way they take care of things. They don't, we have to stay on top of them to fulfill their obligations under the MOU. This, this is a problem for us, and we shouldn't have to be doing this if you have an agreement, you should stick by that agreement. There are other issues here, it's not, it's not just, it's not just, I don't want anybody to believe that this is a vendetta or anything like that against ORYA, it's just this whole situation, we're spending a lot of money, and they're asking for a lot of money to manage themselves. And the devil is in the details when you take a look at financials and you start talking to people within the organization to find out where that money's going. It's a lot of money. Lee doesn't have a lot of financial resources to plow into this. You know, since I've been on the REC mission, I've pretty much fought tooth and nail for every penny we get. And we've been able to, to move some programs forward. This year, we're looking at. This year, we're looking at putting in archery, pickleball court, a model drone club, getting those things started. Those are all low-cost items, and that's the way we've been running our budget. John, I would love to have extra money in there to do other things, but we're limited in the manpower to do other things, so we kind of have to take it one step at a time. Basically, when we looked at the budget, we just wanted the balance sheet to be even on both sides. We have the group of kids that need or wish to participate in organizations like ORYA, and they're not the only organization. We have United Seacoast, we have Maximum Velocity, and I just heard tonight that a number of ORYA coaches have moved over to Maximum Velocity. They just started a basketball program that started up and is becoming very successful at a lower cost. So, there are things happening within that, and that's what I urge you folks to look at is this whole situation. Maybe we do need to sit down as a group and just really study this relationship. And that's exactly what Durham did, and that's what Medbury's coming around to. I've been invited to talk, to participate with Medbury's Select when coming up to discuss this very same issue because they're looking at it too. So, that's all we're urging is let's balance the, let's balance the books for those that want a place for words through an organization. Are we, are we providing money to a nonprofit as a welfare type of donation? Because there are other, there are other organizations that could use money too. What about 4-H, Girl Scouts, Cub Scouts, and so on? We're not contributing, and they don't ask for any money for that. Take Maximum Velocity, they work on their own, and they pay their coaches. They don't ask for money, they don't get money, they pay to use the facilities. That's why I say that the whole situation's upside down, and nowhere else in the state that we've been able to find is a arrangement like this. So, I'm just urging the Select Board to take a closer look at this, and then, you know, instead of just throwing money at it, let's look at it realistically and logically and see what it's really doing, and talk to the people that are involved to find out what's going on internally.
I'm not going to argue, sorry, just a little.
Thank you, Larry.
Sorry, next year, I'll actually.
Yeah.
The other shoe will hop, John. Mr. Paul? Oh, sorry. Paul was quicker than I.
Paul Gazowski, forty-six, Life Berlin. First of all, I think it's wise for you to invite ORYA to your next meeting and have a discussion about the concerns that you have, and I can understand them. A couple of things, and back in my earlier days, I coordinated soccer programs for ORYA of travel and recreation soccer for a few years, and that's when it was all volunteer, and it was a much smaller program, and it was a different sports, youth sports climate. I also was on the founding board of Seacoast United, which is a club, soccer club, it's a privately funded soccer club, it's competitive, it's not for all kids, whereas ORYA is for all kids, and it's designed for all kids. One of the reasons why Seacoast United was created was to meet the needs of kids who want to play more competitively and whose parents are willing to pay that price. My impression is Maximum Velocity falls into that same category. It's not just pure recreational soccer, it's more competitive soccer and sports, and they play in different leagues, they travel more, they pay their coaches. ORYA doesn't do any of that. I see ORYA in a similar way that I see the school district, and that the school district represents all three towns, and I know that there's a proportionate ratio in the school district. But I see ORYA at its best as a common recreational sports organization, and I think it has a rich history in the three towns, and I hesitate to start cutting heads of Lee children and Medbury children and Durham children, if you will, because they don't look at each other that way. Thank you.
So, I just got to mention, if you do that to ORYA, which is fine, my park budget is nowhere near where it needs to be to do to the fields what ORYA was paying to have done to them, because they paid twice a year for fertilization and overseeding of all the little rubber parks, Stevens Field and Massway. They paid a shatter time, all of them, at the end of the year. They pay for some of the sprinkler maintenance and stuff like that, and with the budget that I even put forward, I can't afford to pay the landscape company that's been in there taking care of them for years to keep it up at the pace it's been kept up at. So.
Do we, does it mean personally that? You know? So, they cover that, do we know how much that is?
Just a, I had Hillside Landscape and do the upper sheet field, so the back left field this year, and to overseed that, fertilize it, the first time was nine hundred and fifty-six dollars, because we're trying to get that to a point where we can put teams on it and rent the field out, and we've come a long way in the last year overseeding and doing what we did to it. But that first time for the seed and all that was nine hundred, give or take, and then you still get, that's for that field, you still get the baseball field and the other two fields and the multipurpose field too, and ORYA did twice. They do in the spring and in the fall on all the other fields.
So, Rebecca Hawthorne, sixty bucks, Gara Serra. I was just going to comment as a parent of the adorable six-year-old that I have who has participated in ORYA. I'm looking outside, I don't think it's worth the money. I don't think the program that we participate in was well-run. I like to describe it as a mosh pit of other six-year-olds, half of which were rolling on the ground eating grass. So, I mean, it's a beautiful idea, and perhaps if they paid some of their coaches, they might get coaches in there who had great ideas, and I thank God for volunteers, but you put seventy-five little kids on a field with really no direction, they're not learning anything. And so, now, I'm looking outside, I know a lot of their coaches have left to go coach at other places because of how it's being run, and whereas I think it is necessary, it's a beautiful thing for our kids to have the opportunity to do sports. I don't know that ORYA is that opportunity, perhaps talking to Durham Rack and Medbury and forming something else, I don't know what the answer is, but I don't know why we're giving them so much money for what we actually give back as the parents.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Parks and Recreation, anything in there?
No.
Library?
No.
No. HTRI purposes?
No.
Ag commissions? We want nothing, so hopefully we're good. Ancient Conservation Commission, they don't, nothing. Bond principles, we're good with those, hopefully. Bond interest, we're good with those, hopefully as well. Last page, capital reserve funds.
Do you want to review these as we go through the warrant?
As you go through warrant.
Good.
Yeah, easier.
Good. So, switch to the warrant itself. Article one and two are put on by the Planning Board. Oh, excuse me, two.
Two.
One is the, um.
Town.
Article number three, that's the bond, nine one two million, hundred and twelve thousand coming out of Capital Reserve. The only question that was brought to my attention is there's no mention in here about site costs. Can we add that as part of the description?
If you want to specifically put that in, I mean, that would be part of building, building.
Well, it says, purpose of designing, engineering, building, equipping, a new municipal office building and to offer blah, 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 because we're doing that, but the site costs include more than just stuff for the municipal building. That potential, that parking lot out front.
Yeah.
That's more for the library and the town hall.
Okay.
I just don't want to get in a situation where somebody says, hey, wait a minute, that has nothing to do with the municipal building, that has to do with, Mr. Brown, Mr. LaFors, what are your thoughts? Have any issue with it, or?
If you think it's a site work.
Well, site work has to be done. Yeah. The house has to show up somewhere, somewhere, it's a matter of.
Do you have any problem if we put in?
No.
Site work?
You mean the word, the dollars are already in it.
Direct to dollars, but the words, site work?
Yeah.
So, in that list, engineering, building, and site work?
The site work has to be done.
Just so there's no confusion. Oh, can I make a comment? I love to talk to people at Market Basket, but you don't like to be accosted in Market Basket, accosted in Market Basket.
Really?
Yes, yes, yes.
I sure do.
One of the things that was mentioned to me, how dare I not recommend a particular warrant article? And if you look at these, you've got in here, right at the moment, it says the Select Board does not slash recommends this warrant article. There, I guess, ignoring the slash. Because I got chewed out in the dairy section about how dare I not put this warrant article away. I said, no, you didn't. Draft warrant says that you're not in support of it.
They noticed that you weren't in support of anything?
Yes, yes, well, they had a particular thing that they were interested in, so can we maybe not put that in until we decide, or? Because I love to talk to people at Market Basket, but I don't like to get chewed out in front of everybody.
We can try to restate it a different way, so it's, does.
I got two emails on there.
Did you really?
Yes, I do.
Hey, listen, at least we know people are looking at it.
Somebody's reading this stuff.
So, maybe when we do the draft, it has no word.
You said to.
Well, I don't want to lose track of the fact that we need to do that, so.
Well, can we do something else that doesn't? So, I'm glad to see it wasn't just me.
No, it wasn't just. But people do talk to me in Market Basket.
Oh, I love to talk to.
They also talk to me in the transfer station. They also talk to me in other areas.
All right. So, we put on number three?
Yeah, moving from there to number four.
Number four. The number will get.
Well, number four is the operating, but we might not know yet.
Number five, number five and number six.
Will he, will he?
Yeah, he needs to, because I don't know if I know anything about this, so if you can enlighten me.
So, the fire department has had a truck committee for the past year working on the proposed new engine, and I would like to remove that warrant article and hopefully do it next year because the cost of the materials has gone up ninety percent.
Oh.
Because of the tariffs. So, we've been working on the project, we do have a lot of work done, but that just came out, so we do not have enough money in the CIP right now currently for that.
So, are you thinking that maybe when the tariffs go away, that the price will go down, hopefully, maybe?
I don't know.
What's that?
They don't go away, it would just save up.
Correct. So, are the board, I assume that you're comfortable with moving to five?
Yes, yes. There might be other opportunities out there also, so we need to explore.
So, I guess six is what I need some clarification on. Something to talk to me about.
Six I've been working on for a while are portables that we have, and I've been to the board before to ask to purchase about five of them. Those are thirteen years old now, from what we got from the state grant. So, instead of coming to the board every couple of years and asking to spend the money to buy five of them, I was hoping that we could purchase all twenty of them and replace them down. They do have a lease-to-own program, I've been working with Julie a lot on that as a warrant article, and the issue that we're having is that the bank will not quote it for any longer than thirty days, the lease, the financials for the lease. So, I was hoping that we could change that warrant article and purchase them outright for the eighty-seven thousand dollars and not the lease-to-own.
And the fund we'd come out of would be. Is this raised or is it coming out of? Raised.
Well, it's always raised. You need to take it out of the fire equipment, you know, just taxation.
The problem that we've had, and I've tried to get the radios into the CIP, is that they weren't, they didn't meet the value for the radio, so I haven't been able to put them in. And in the future, if we make this purchase, they will be going in because they do now meet the threshold for everyone.
Well, I have the group of fire chiefs, instead of doing leasing and everything, just to make a formal purchase.
So, the problem with the quote was that you start this now, and I've been working with the banks and with the company, but by the time we get to March, they won't hold that price.
No, I think we just go ahead and make a purchase.
Yep.
So, if Julie can rewrite that, make a word.
Thank you.
What?
You have any?
Oh, Mr. Tam.
John Tamkin speaking as a trustee of trust funds. Fire equipment, whether it's in the CIP or not, if it's fire equipment, then it can come out of the Capital Reserve Fund, which is for fire equipment. There's nothing in the wording that created that fund that refers to some plan that would hold the items to be purchased. So, I just think that the board should know that when the trustees of trust funds approve or don't approve expenditure from the Capital Reserve Fund, we don't look to see whether it's in the CIP. We look to see whether that item meets the purpose, fits within the purpose for which that fund was created.
Thanks, John, I'm just.
Thank you.
I understood that, but I was wondering if the chief had used one of the monies that are in the Capital Reserve Fund for something else?
Well, you're just going to be in the whole ninety thousand dollars towards the fire truck.
Yeah. That's why I concern is that we have a schedule right now for every time. You're questioning it back now with the fire truck because.
We'll take it out.
We'll take that out towards the fire trucks for the future, the next thirty years that we have everything set up for.
That's what I thought.
Can I make a suggestion to the board? Can we create our own, what is it called, lease purchase? Can we purchase the radios out of the fire equipment Capital Reserve Fund, put an additional forty-five thousand dollars in this year, an additional forty-five thousand dollars next year, which would essence give you the same thing as having a lease purchase for two years? And if you're not buying the fire truck this year, you're buying the next, then you still should have money, well, depending on what the fire truck is, six hundred and fifty thousand, you're still going to be short, but.
Do you mean increase the proposed deposit to the Capital Reserve Fund by forty-five thousand dollars?
This year and increase it next year, but the additional forty-five, I think, whatever the eighty-seven, like half of it this year, half of it next year. That would give us, in essence, a lease purchase for two years, basically.
A suggestion?
Yeah.
Would be to increase it more than forty-five thousand because he already thinks the fire truck is over by sixty thousand, estimate about sixty thousand? So, the one, the deposit for this year just covers the purchase of the fire truck.
But he's not buying it this year because he just removed.
Right, so let's say next year, you're going to have to put in the scheduled amount of one seventy-five, and I don't have in front of me, plus forty-five, plus sixty. So, if you even get more than forty-five thousand, put in more towards the sixty that's over the five seventy-five figure for the truck, just be, instead of having to put in three hundred thousand next year.
I guess I'm banking on the fact that I think the tariffs at some point will come off. I think, hopefully, if we're still in that particular situation, it's going to be problematic for everybody. Hopefully, China.
That was just a suggestion. That was just a suggestion.
So...
Because we're already short, and now we're going to be short even more.
I guess I need to please chief to give me some information. Do you want to own these things, or are you? Fire chief, excuse me. You want to own these things, or you want to lease them?
Own. And even with the lease owned, that was the, that's the end game, was that we lease them for two years.
I don't see what we gain by doing, putting it up to the department. They got to raise the money anyways.
Yeah, but we get, instead of hitting the tax rate all in one year, it's in two years. So it splits the pain half and half.
I feel just go for it. Cut something else.
Okay.
Yeah.
You.
Is someone looking out there?
Look at me.
No, I got vision. I got vision.
Mr. Brown?
I'm, I'll be honest with you. I don't, I don't know which is the best way to be honest with you, so just go for it.
So maybe just buy it.
Okay. So can you restructure number six and remove that second section, I guess, or whichever name it sounds as? Okay. All right, number seven, don't run away. Any questions with number seven?
For benefit of anyone who wants to be holding the charge?
Oh, uh, the thermal imaging. This now, this is the third one?
Correct. Listen, you had a third and last one.
So now you have three that are all the same.
Correct.
Okay. That's what I wanted to ask you, so... Anything with seven, thermal imaging?
No, I'm good.
No, that's, that's right.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to, it says majority voting for it. It says the majority vote at the end of that survey.
They all, they all say.
Well, some of them say three-fifths vote. It depends on what the article is. Well, that's what I'm saying, like, it all tells, it just tells you which, what you need. Or somewhere in parentheses in some line.
Uh, number eight, number eight is new, um, maintenance, non-capital reserve fund?
I propose to remove it.
I propose to leave it.
Good, Brown, you got a problem. I just don't see the need of it. If we need to fix a building, we just fix it.
This is for things that, like, for instance, the inspection that needs to be done at the transfer station for the water holding tank and pipes and stuff, it would cover things like that.
I understand. I think pretty soon we're going to end up with fifty, sixty of these capital reserve funds. It's getting kind of ridiculous, I feel. So I, I just, I don't know, I just don't see the, the need for it this time. We can always find some place in an operational budget to grab something.
Yeah, but, but John, it makes sense to set some money aside for, for building and equipment maintenance. I mean, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's a cost that you know is, is facing. Sooner or later, you're going to have to do something to the building, to the, to the equipment. You might as well have some kind of budget set aside to say, "Yes, we can do that. No, we can't do that," as opposed to sit and say, "Well, where are we going to get the money for?"
I guess what I'm also looking at is the fact that the operational budget is running at five percent, and there's a lot of capital equipment purchases here. So I'm just looking for some way to cut this back, as the chairman had asked before about splitting the previous one, so... I'm making an argument at this point here, is that maybe this is something we could do next year or the year after, I don't know. But at the same time, we have, in the past, Julie, we've not been able to find any monies in the past?
We've been able to find money when we needed it.
Okay. We took it from somewhere, alright?
But it's a gross budget.
And then the somewhere becomes an issue.
But, but every once in a while, there's an item or a thing that needs to be done and struggle a bit.
We do.
How to pay for it, as you said, the example of inspecting and maintaining.
I agree. We do a great job of moving money around, et cetera, et cetera. But that doesn't mean that it should be, it should be business as usual by doing that. We should, we know that we're going to have maintenance costs for a building. We know that we're going to have maintenance costs for a compactor, uh, for, for who knows what. And we, we should, we should recognize that and, and start a fund for it.
The other thing that we, the Steve's transfer station issue in terms of the inspection, the other thing that it came up, I don't remember what it was, Chief Johnsfield, but the whole air conditioning system in the police department. You guys didn't do it because it was expensive.
Correct.
And you guys did wall units. Now, I didn't spend one point four million dollars for this building to have when one of the systems dies, that we have to jury-rig something because we can't afford it. I would like this to have a fund and be able to say, "Okay, the air conditioning system died in the police department side. Let's see what it costs to fix it and move forward." And we can't use stuff from the, it's my understanding, can't use stuff from the capital reserve fund, because that's for buildings, not for maintenance items. But I would like something in there to cover this, and I agree with you, John. I'm not, I'm not trying to add things, but maybe we can make it till next year, but how about if we wait and see what the rest of this stuff is? And if we're still feeling it's way too much, maybe that's something that can go.
Okay, sounds like a point.
All right. Are you okay with that, considering the finality?
A good discussion.
I sat here and tried to help you, and you folded like a cheap suit.
A cheap suit?
Come on, I'm in the middle here.
Good. If I get a cost within the dairy department?
I'm mixing it to the mix.
It's called a cheap suit. I'm not aware of this coming along. Um... Mr. Tappin?
John Tappin again, speaking as a trustee of trust funds. Uh, where we are, um, not infrequently asked, uh, whether a particular fund can be used for a particular purpose. And we then have to go back and look at the purpose that was stated, um, and try to determine whether or not this expenditure fits. Um, in, in reading the wording of this, and I'm not speaking to whether or not this is something you should do, but in reading the wording, um, the non-capital reserve for town buildings, that seems fairly specific. And equipment, um, because of the way it's worded, it might seem like maybe it's only the equipment that's in town buildings. Or maybe it means any town-owned equipment, um, like a fire truck, which is a piece of town-owned equipment. Um, and so because of that, um, I would like to see if this is kept, um, a little more specific wording about what type of equipment. Is it just any town-owned equipment? Is it just equipment in buildings? Um, and then the other thing I would like to make a point about, um, non-capital reserve funds. We have, um, we are sometimes asked whether a particular capital reserve fund can be asked for an expenditure which is really a repair. It's not a capital acquisition or a capital improvement. It's really a repair. Um, this non-capital reserve fund is the kind of fund that could be used for repairs. It can also be used for, um, uh, maintenance or inspections that come up less frequently than once a year, such as the fires, the cistern at the transfer station, uh, where you have, it's not a huge expense, but it's an expense that just comes up once every five years. Um, so instead of having your budget go up for that one expense in the fifth year, and then when budgets go up, they often don't go down the full amount. Um, this lets you put aside a smaller amount each year, so that in that fifth year, you have that amount.
I think maybe we should clarify that for equipment, because one of the other things that, you know, we talked about the inspections, we talked about air conditioning systems, like, for instance, the generator for this building. At some point, you have to deal with it, and I'm not sure how the trustees would look at that generator. Is it part of the building? Is it piece of equipment? This would give us a place to at least deal with those kinds of things. And also the generator that sits in the, the hobo shed, the tool shed which ramp road. What if we need to fix that, you know? Then we've got to come up with the money for those things. And I think it just fills a need, but I'm a cheap suit, so I'm, uh, cold.
There you go. I'm going to remember that.
Does anybody have any specific suggestions for how many words you want to attach to this? To make it specific and to, to speak to the issue of the fire truck, I mean, I guess I would imagine that if a fire truck needed a repair that was so extensive that there was not money in the fire department operating budget, wouldn't it be able to come out of this?
Well, the way it's worded now, it could be interpreted.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I think John's right.
I think it goes...
So the words need to be tightened up a little bit.
Well, just remember, you, if you tighten it up.
Yeah.
You restrict the use of the fund.
Yeah.
And I understand, well, I think we have...
I think we need to come to consensus, what we think it should be. Should it be as loose as this? Should we tighten it up? Maybe that's something we could think about. But I think the, John, Mr. Tappin's point is that town buildings and equipment, it could be interpreted as town equipment in a town building, but...
That's why I'm, my, coming back to my argument, at this point, we're just adding another fund of an existing fund that you draw on.
Well...
But if we narrow it down a little bit, or if we focus it, at least the public knows exactly what the money's being used for. It's, like you said, uh, building issues, things tied to buildings.
Well, this particular fund would be for maintenance of those particular things that are inside, so...
Which would be air conditioners and things like that.
You know, inspections and things like that. And I think if we're talking about equipment, for instance, the example I gave in terms of the generator that's in the hobo shed, that's not part of the building. Could we use it for that? I, I don't know. That's a question. I think part of it, the discussion...
I would argue that would you put?
Oh, Mr. Tappin?
Again, I think it's up to the board as to what they want this fund to work, uh, be used for. If it said town building and town equipment, then I think that would be interpreted as, um, anything related to town buildings or any type of town equipment. If it said something like town buildings and equipment associated with town buildings, um, then it would only be that kind of type of equipment that's either in or somehow connected to a town building. Um, on the question of the generator, and here I'm just speaking my opinion about the generator that's outside, connected to this building, which is only there for the purpose of running, keeping this building running when electricity goes out. It's equipment related to this building. So it's, it's up to the board as to which they want it to. I'm just asking to make it more specific, so that in the future, we would know, um, what the purpose is.
But this, but this article says non-capital reserve.
Yes, yes, this is, so, uh, capital, a capital reserve fund, which is what most of our funds are, can only be used for, um, a capital acquisition or a capital improvement. So you can buy a fire truck, you can build a building, you can put an addition on a building, uh, you can upgrade the pump in the fire truck, or, or something like that. Um, but you can't do, um, repair, use it for repairs. You can't use it for normal maintenance, um, because those are not capital expenses.
Can I ask, Mr. Tappin, I know this is just your opinion, um, the generator that's in the hobo shed, if that need to be fixed or repaired, is that part, that's not part of the building?
I think we would come back and ask, what can that generator be used for?
Okay.
Um, so if you take that generator to, I don't know, Little, Little River Park or some other town park to run...
Lights?
The concert, um, then you'd have to say, no, it's, it's got other uses. If the only thing it could be used for, and the only thing it's ever used for is running a building when the power goes out, then you could make a case that it's connected to a grid.
Oh, Mr. Kozowski.
Uh, Paul Kozowski, forty-six, Life Free Lane. Um, is it possible that this could be part of the line item for government buildings? Instead of creating a fund, I mean, if we have a need, why don't we just put it in the line, put it in the budget? Uh, and, and, and attached to that is an observation, or, um, two observations in all this discussion. Um, I'm hopeful that this bond for, you know, this office building is going to succeed. If it does, and I'm hopeful that town hall will be renovated and the parish house will come into play. We increase our buildings, we increase our campus. Uh, about a week ago, I went looking for what department or maintenance personnel belonged to. I couldn't quite find them. Uh, so for me, uh, maybe what we're headed toward is, uh, a facility supervisor, if you will, not a director, a supervisor, uh, somebody who kind of takes on the role of overseeing, uh, those operations. Uh, because we're, we do have a need, as demonstrated by it, and I really respect all our departments and our chiefs in this building, but, you know, I'm not sure it's their duty to go chasing air conditioners. You know what I mean? I, I think that they should be able to report to somebody, we got, you know, we, we need a fix. And I'm not even sure it should be in their budget. It should be in somebody else's budget, so, thank you.
To answer your questions, they're, they're in government buildings? Maintenance repair?
Yep.
Government buildings, maintenance wages?
Just roll it into that.
But that's wages, but...
But no, there's an M and R?
Oh, M and R, yeah, but you were asking about the staff. You were looking for staff.
Oh, yeah, I, I went on to the website.
Okay.
And I couldn't find those personnel.
So maintenance repair, two, three, four, three, seven. All right. Why is everybody smiling? Something funny happened?
Well, we're being recorded.
Yes, we're a happy bunch. Um, so article eight, what do we want to do to it? Anything?
Dispose of it.
Dispose of it.
Haven't changed my mind.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Who'd you put in? We got one in government buildings, M and R.
We got it.
I think that's good.
Do you want to remove eight?
Yeah.
All right. I'm not in favor of that, but you want to remove all eight?
So is, of course, and Mr. Brown suggests that we increase the operating budget?
I'm not sure.
No.
No? Mr. Brown?
Well, no. Well, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. I don't know. I think I have to think about it a little bit. I'm not going to just jump all over that subject, because, you know, all of a sudden...
All right, so how about if we leave that subject and we...
Yeah, hasn't got enough votes going where?
Mr. Kozowski, Paul?
A little causing trouble to me.
Just for the record, I would take the fifteen thousand and roll it into the twenty thousand dollar line and bring that line up to thirty-five thousand.
All right, well, we'll come back to that. Um, article number nine, um, the only comment I had about that is, um, we've basically just changed the, the dates, but maybe we need to include something in the warrant article in terms of what has been done so far. I don't know.
Well, I see. I'm recommending that we remove it.
Okay.
And the reason why, it's been two and a half years and nothing's happened.
Oh, well, that's not completely true, but go ahead.
It's beyond the proposal.
Well...
But I just feel that at this time, it's, um, we're looking at a new building that come in, and I want to focus on that new building alone. And at this time, I, I don't see any practical use, I just don't want to move forward with it.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Well, you know, it's easy to say, just suspend efforts to remove or demolish the parish house. We haven't talked about, what are we going to do with the parish house? We're going to demolish it? Is that the decision that we're going to demolish it?
That's what was the original vote.
Or is it more just, you know, remove or demolish? I mean, I don't, I don't know. All to me, all that does for me is to bake more questions about what, what are we going to do with the parish house? It's been going on for a while. If we're going to demolish it, and if it's in the cards to demolish it, which I don't think it is by the time you get everybody involved in the conversation, but if we think we can demolish it, I'm, I, I really think that's the right thing to do with it, to be honest with you, based on my opinion of, of what, what the parish house is.
And I, now, if you remember, the original warrant was passed this, the money was put in to demolish it.
Mm-hmm.
It's been floating out for a couple of years.
Exactly.
So I still would like to remove it.
The current thinking is, and I'm... Current thinking is, and I'm with you, let's focus on the municipal office building and fixing the town hall. But the parish house was that third phase. We needed a space to put the committees and commissions, since they're not going to be in the top floor of the, the town hall. There's an assessment currently being done in terms of the cost to do that. It is, just like the town hall, it's up for L chip money, up to fifty percent. So I think if we were to not have the parish house, we'd have to probably make the office building bigger so that the committees and commissions would have someplace to go. But I think all this does is just kick the can down the road a little bit to give them time to, one, get the assessment, how much it is, and also give them the opportunity to come back and say, okay, it's X amount to fix it. We can get fifty percent from the state to, to fund it. Does the town want to expend the remaining money? Also gives them an opportunity to do some fundraising.
And what, what do you want to do? Do you want to remove it? Do you want to demolish it? Or you just want to keep the status quo until you get enough information to say, here's what we want?
Maximally.
Well, that's, okay, I subscribe to that as long as it doesn't drift on for another two years.
It is.
You just change your mind. It's been two and a half years.
You're right. You're right. I changed my mind because I wasn't on the table. All I had was that paragraph.
Right, so the warrant article that was voted on in March of nineteen called for a plan to be approved this March or it would be removed or demolished in July of twenty.
You still have another plan.
July of twenty twenty. This warrant article holds it out until July of twenty-two. So it's another two years.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that. No, I'd rather demolish it.
Well, I put Joe, March of twenty twenty-two because if the municipal office building passes and the town hall renovation passes, we're working on those two things. We're not working on the parish house, which is really phase three. So in terms of timing, that's how much time you'd probably need to do that. Because our focus is the municipal office building and the town hall. Parish house was never number one or number two. So, that's my thought.
And when we originally went after this, the original discussion before it actually became a warrant, we were trying to purchase the land without the parish house. We had no interest in it at that time.
Right, and the church wanted to.
They wanted to, they moved the line over.
Um, voted, would that be that?
Was that?
Yes.
Yeah.
The line over.
They moved the line over, yeah, yeah. So I, I'm just looking at this as that the houses, I've walked through the house. It's fairly dilapidated. It requires a lot of money to refurbish this thing.
Did you say fairly dilapidated?
It's kind of broken back and there's no copper left. Well, that's why I understand why we want to continue to play with it at this time.
Well, I would want us to give, because the assessment is due, we're going to get a rough number to fix it next week. And then the final report is at the end of February, beginning of March. At least we drew it be amenable for another year.
I don't want to keep going under here.
Okay. Okay, let me, let me. Go ahead. I don't know who was first. Mr. Tappin or Mr. Kozowski?
John Tappin, one eighty-seven Stepitz Stone Road, and also a member of the TCPC. And I wanted to ask Selectman Lacorze, who just stated that he knows that it's going to take a lot of money to fix the parish house. How does he know that? Because I have, as a member of the TCPC, we have talked to the assessor who is working on determining how much money it will cost to fix it, and we don't yet know that answer. So I'm challenging, asking you about your statement that you know that it's going to take a lot of money to fix it.
I would imagine it, in my mind, I'm not a builder, but probably three hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred thousand.
Which means you don't actually know the answer. It is your guess.
Of course I don't know the answer.
Well, that's the point that I think Selectman Budby was trying to make, is that right now there is an assessment going on by professionals who have documented history of doing that type of assessment for old buildings. And they're going to tell us what it costs. And then based on that, you can make an informed decision.
Well, I guess my thought on this is the parish house was never a part of my philosophy for our campus. And I just didn't see that as a possible vision at this time. So I, I just don't want to move forward. We're just going to add another year and a half to two years to continue and work on this.
Mr. Kozowski.
Paul Kozowski, forty-six Lamprey Lane. Since I've followed this for a very long period of time, I, I do have some comments. I, when I saw this warrant article, for me, it resolved a lingering worry in my mind that the parish house was going to get in the way of the opportunity to renovate the town hall because they would be competing for the same grant money. And I've said this more than several times. So in my mind, this, this clarifies that. And I felt, when I read it, I, I was relieved a bit in that it pushes it out a fiscal year. And assuming that we can get some municipal office building passed, the bond passed, and we have motion, then we have motion on the town hall, and we can basically pursue L chip funds with the full support of everybody involved, all the commissions and all the major players, and with community support. And this would allow time for the Heritage Commission to research this and, and work on it and put it in the queue for use. I, I've always felt there is a potential use for it. I'm not sure I see it as meeting space as much as a multi-use type of space. I agree with Selectman Lacorze, it's going to cost a fair amount of money if it can be renovated, okay? No, I don't know what that amount is. I, I toured the building and I'm not a builder either, but my sense is that, that I, I think everybody deserves the opportunity to, to see if it can work and to see if funding can be leveraged. However, it needs to know its place in the queue. And we need to hope that we can get everybody behind passing this bond. Thank you.
Amy Miller.
Amy Miller, fifteen Sherbin Road. I am also on the TCPC. And the money was spent to have this evaluation done so that the taxpayers can make an informed decision. I'm not sure what the answer for the parish house is, but I think it makes sense to wait till we get that evaluation as to the costs and then publicize that so when people vote on this article, they can wrote it down if the amount is too great right at that point. And that will give you your answer of, no, this isn't going to work, the people don't want it. And I just think it's worth waiting for that. So to put the article on there, put it back to the people with the amount of money that's recommended that it would cost, and then we'll have our answer.
So, I'm sorry, did, did you say when you thought you were going to have the cost estimate for the parish house?
Yeah, part of their particular deal is they're supposed to give us a rough number next week. So they get some rough numbers. The final report is not until the end of February, beginning of March. But the rough number should give us a rough idea of what it is. And what I've said to the Town Center Vision Committee, if it's half a million dollars, four hundred thousand, I'm not in favor of it. I think we just need to give them an opportunity to find out how much it is to renovate it. And if it's too much, let's get rid of it. If there's a possibility, let it sit there. And we can deal with it after they do office building passes.
Right, but you could, so you could find out in March of this year, say? Which, if not sooner, what it's going to cost.
Yep.
And let's just, for the sake of this discussion, say it's four hundred thousand dollars. Because you just said you personally feel.
I think that's too much.
It's a lot of money.
We still have to hold on to the building until July of twenty twenty-two.
Not if they hold it down.
Correct, but if they, let's just suppose they vote for this, then you find out it's going to be four or five hundred thousand dollars. You can't get rid of the building.
It just sits there.
It just sits there for a while.
Well, let's change it to twenty-one. I, I don't know. I, I'm just thinking, I want to give, give it an opportunity. If we utilize it, it's fine. If we can't, let's get rid of it. It's just sitting there. I'd like to see what the, the assessment says so I can base my decision on numbers versus, because we're not builders.
No.
This group isn't a builder. So let them do their job and we paid them money, or are going to be paying them money. So let them do what they're supposed to be doing, so. So, Mr. Lacorze, you'd like to remove it? Mr. Brown? You want to keep it, remove it, change it?
Let's wait till we get the, get the valuation on it and what it's going to take and then make a decision. And I am not, I'm not a fan of keeping it, I'll be honest with you. I think the little garlands are going to get shorter and shorter as it collapses in front of our eyes, waiting for us to make a decision, so.
So we have until the twenty-third?
First?
First?
Twenty-first.
We should have the number, well, then, the rough number. So how about we leave nine where it is, but let's review it.
I'll tell you, my other concern is that people are going to look at that when, when they go to vote and so on, and they're going to say, okay, so you want X amount of money to build the new town center, but how much is this one going to cost us? Well, we don't have the, we don't have the number yet, whatever, whatever. I think it's going to put them off relative to, to passing the, the, the new town hall. I really do, because it's, it's an unknown that, you know, they're not going to be able to get an answer to. They're going to be uncomfortable with, how much money are they going to spend just on this? And then how much money are they going to spend on the town hall? Now, all of a sudden, the three million or whatever it's going to be for the town, for the, for the new town hall becomes three point six or three point five. And then with the old town hall becomes four point seven, you know? And they just start rolling these things. And I'm very concerned that it's going to, it's going to affect the outcome of the.
The, the other thing we're going to get, which we've just been talking about the parish house, but we also are going to get a rough number for fixing the town hall at the same time.
Yep.
So they're going to be telling us what that is as well.
And, well, they're going to ask, are we going to give them the number? If somebody comes up and asks you, what's it going to cost to fix this? This is before the vote, no. Are we going, we going to give them the number? Are we going to advertise the number? And that's all I'm saying, is they're going to add that. You know, so I'm very concerned. For the old town hall, we have a very good, we have a very good story, I think, for the old town hall. No doubts about the parish house. I, I don't think it's, I don't think it comes out too well.
I think Mr. Brown makes a valid point. I just don't want to dilute the effort with the municipal building at this time. And I think we, Mr. Brown is right. We do the old town hall, people really want to keep that. It's memorable and it's got a history. And we've always felt that it should be a main part of the campus. There's no question about it. So I, I just do tie it up a little bit, I guess. So four thousand dollars, four hundred thousand dollars is where your cutoff is.
I'd go to three ninety-nine, maybe. So how about if we just leave it where it is and let's get the rough number and then we can decide?
Yeah, I think we're going to have the rough number soon.
Yep, hopefully next week. So, but let's keep that as something we go back to, though.
Well, it's two to one anyway, so we're going to hold it for a while. Listen, Mr. Brown changes this one.
No, I'm not going to change my mind. And I, you know, I'm very concerned about it. I have to sort of.
All right. Article number ten. It's the, our department capital reserve fund? Anything? No?
Yep.
Eleven is renovating town hall capital reserve fund. This is the remaining half, I guess, in terms of renovating the town hall. We put in fifty thousand last year. We're thinking it's about four hundred. We'll apply for a fifty percent match from L chip, so. But once again, like I said, we eventually get a rough number next week so we can have an idea of how much that is, so. Okay? Yes? Number twelve, library building capital reserve fund? Anything?
No.
I'm not sure, this came from the trustees?
Yes. Yes.
Yes?
There's a trustee now.
There's a trustee now?
There is one now.
There is a trustee now. Article twelve. Do you want to talk to him? Sure, okay. About what we're doing right now. Ruth Ivert, Library Director. Article five, we're asking you to raise fifty thousand dollars to put into the Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund. We are right now issuing an R, we have issued an RFP for design and cost estimates to put a small addition onto the library that would come out of our Lee Library Building Capital Reserve Fund. So that we could have some numbers in place that we could look at over the next year to bring an article next March, March twenty-twenty-one. Yes? We're putting an addition onto the library. So in anticipation of that, we're just looking to increase him on money we have on our capital reserve fund now, which is, I think, around three seventy-six thousand?
Three seventy-nine.
Three seventy-nine as of the end of October. Three seventy-nine.
So.
So we're just looking to add something to that capital reserve fund in anticipation of bringing an article next in twenty twenty-one, March of twenty twenty-one.
You still have sixty thousand in the library support capital reserve fund as well. So that brings you up to four thirty-nine thousand.
It will get us within shouting distance. And then we have any money raised by the Lee Library Community Center Capital.
Foundation.
Foundation, there may open.
One of the things that the trustees have really been trying to work for is to build up a little bit at a time. And then that way we can have the foundation raising more money. And we don't want to have a bond. We, we just want to have the money in hand so that we can add on to the library and renovate those things in the old section that need to be done, the ADA compliance and things like that.
So we don't have to bond, so.
I like that.
Or, or since you're, you have the fifteen thousand, it's not going to the rest of the world. It's worth a try.
Larry's going to eat those words.
We could offer a sports forum at the library. Maybe, if we've got the land.
We all set for twelve?
Yes, we are.
Thirteen, fifty thousand to the town buildings capital reserve fund? Now, is that?
Yep.
Uh, fourteen? Okay. Okay? You're okay?
I'm, I'm not okay. You're not?
No, I'm not okay. Where is that? Right now, there's, where is that sheet? Right now, there's five hundred and twenty thousand in there. And if you look at their projections, lowest it dips down to is three twenty-nine. I, I don't see why we need to have that much money sitting there for twenty years. I propose that we cut that to zero. I think it's, where is it? Excuse me. Yeah, three thirty-nine, in three, two thousand thirty, it dips to three hundred and thirty-nine thousand. That's a lot of money sitting there, just based on the needs. And I, I don't think, looking in terms of splitting things, I, I think that's something that we can do without for a couple of years, based on the plan that they have and things that we need to replace.
Anybody want to speak there?
I don't.
Pete, oh, there you go. Pete White, North River Road. I think we've got three bridges that we need to look at. We're looking at one right now in Tuttle Road. We're going to slip-line it. We've got one on, well, Cartland Road that is getting, we've done one, we've done the bottom of it. But now we're beginning to see some poke-throughs and stuff of the old color. And that's going to need to be, something's going to have to be done there. And then I think, trying to think, the third one was, um, forgotten. Anyway, when we did High Road, that was a million plus. So Cartland Road, you're going to be looking at, at least that, probably twice that. So I don't think you're going to have a whole lot of money left over when and if you do it, but I think you're going to have to do it the next ten to fifteen years.
But those are on the list.
They are.
Yeah, so even with those being done, you're still at three hundred and thirty thousand at the lowest that you ever dipped, even doing all those projects.
I think some of your prices on some of those, at least the last.
I'm only going by what you guys provide these numbers.
Let's look at some realistic pricing, too. I don't think some of those prices are, like I said, if we had a million dollars in the High Road bridge.
Yeah, but the state picks up part of that.
I understand, some of it, but we have to pay it upfront, and then we do get some reimbursement. I'm not sure how much longer that may stay in place. You're going to look at the state's trying to cut some of their funding their way, so that means the towns are going to have to start picking up some of that, too. I think we've got to kind of look at where we're going here with these bridges. I don't think they're going to get any cheaper, put it that way.
Thanks.
So when I did this CIP with Karen and Julie for these ones, we looked at the prices and upped them to at least what the minimum of our share was for High Road, just as the bare minimum, because we were going to be extremely short, I thought, at one point. As Pete said, we're going to slip line two pipes. Well, I'll be talking to you next week about the Tuttle Road one, because that's changed because we failed to get FEMA. So there's no more match to it. They didn't think it affected enough people. They were worried about what would happen upstream on the brook that the pipe would be going into, and so we failed to achieve the FEMA grant four times, so.
I'm sorry, is that the Tuttle one?
Yeah, so instead of keep throwing money at something that we weren't going to eventually succeed at, we got the wetlands permit in to slip line it the same as the Packers Falls Road one, so that one will come in way below estimate. The other bridge Pete's talking about, other than the Cartland Road one, is the bridge by Randy's House over Little River that is an actual bridge on a culvert, and that one's not going to be cheap to fix either. And like Pete said, we don't know if we're going to keep being able to get eighty, twenty splits like we have in the past. So I don't think it's a good idea to completely eliminate it, but cutting it in half until we see what the state's going to go do might not be a bad idea.
Thank you. Thoughts? Keep it the way it is? Cut it in half?
I have no problem cutting it in half. We have time. That's when, when do we get down to the three hundred and something thousand?
Two thousand thirty.
Two thousand thirty. So I have no problem cutting it in half and waiting to see what, what comes out. It gives us time to, I mean, we can look backwards on.
Fifteen. Highway footy capital reserve fund, item number fifteen. I have a problem with this one, but not what you think. Yep, highway. I, I think, I really agree with Mr. LaCrosse in the comment you made the last time, John. I think the CIP should include the cost of a new truck, and if we find one that's used, I think we should purchase a used one. But I don't want us to shortcut the, the plan by saying, oh, we're going to just buy used. We don't know if you're going to find one.
That's correct.
What suggestion, what situation it's going to be and the condition, so I would like to request that the CIP people put that back in as a new truck, and if Mr. Bullock can find a used one, that's fine.
That's a point. I'll go with that.
Can you relay that to the planning board?
I can, so you're going to increase the deposit?
I'm not saying increase the deposit, I'm saying change the number, and then you guys can figure it out next year, because it isn't purchased until, when is it?
Should be two years.
Two years. So in the next process you go through, take that into consideration, and I know this is only advisory, you guys do whatever you want, but I would make that suggestion. I think the other two board advisors concur. Other than that, anything on the fifteen? I'm good. Sixteen? Anything with sixteen?
No.
Can I?
Go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, sorry. I thought I had a question, but I don't.
Sixteen, yes. Can, I have a problem.
Sixteen?
I have a problem with sixteen. I'd like to reduce that to twenty thousand to the thirty-eight. Once again, looking at the projected surpluses or totals going out, the lowest we get down is one thirty-six in two thousand thirty-two. I think there's more than enough money in for what they've planned in terms of replacements. I don't, I don't think it warrants a thirty-eight thousand.
You're on sixteen, right?
Sixteen.
Okay.
Right now, the transportation crew has a hundred and thirty-four thousand in it already.
Okay.
One sixty-seven is next year's projected, then it goes to one ninety-nine, one eighty-one, two fourteen, one ninety-six. So I, I don't think we need all that in there, personally.
So what amount are you suggesting, please?
I'm proposing from thirty-eight to reduce it to twenty. Because I don't want to make it nineteen, because I don't like nineteen.
Got it.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Number seventeen, twenty thousand into fire ponds and cisterns.
Need to keep it.
I don't have any problem with that one.
Good, good, good. Because you get more, or the better.
Yep. And also, Chief Nemec, it's my understanding in here that you've got a cistern being planned, I don't know where it is, but if the town center project goes ahead, you replace that and put one at the town center instead?
Correct.
Okay. Item number eighteen, fifteen thousand into the reevaluation capital reserve fund. Can I ask the town administration question, the information we just got sent in terms of the ratio? And we've been dipped even lower than we thought.
A bit dipped.
Have you gotten in contact with them in terms of them telling us, yes, you need to do that now versus next year? Or they have said not to?
No, when I had a conversation with DRA, he indicated to me that they would not make us do it, just everybody be aware that when we do it, it's going to be a shock to everybody's system.
And that's two thousand twenty-one, right? So not this year, next year?
Correct.
Okay. Because right now, there's sixty.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two, and if we put in another fifteen, and the reevaluation last time cost sixty somewhat thousand?
It may have been less than that, but I get concerned that the company that's been doing it the past few years, if they don't put in the bid that they gave us the past two times, we're looking at much more money.
So right, if this fifteen goes in, that will give us seventy-seven?
I think we should be good, yep.
Okay. More good with that?
I'm good.
All right. Item number twenty?
Nineteen.
Sorry?
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
We know you don't like nineteen.
You didn't like it, that's why you skipped it.
That's right! That's a subconscious thing. Item number nineteen, fifteen thousand in internal service expendable trust for group benefits. Any problems? There's a.
No.
Sixty-eight thousand?
Almost sixty.
Yeah, almost sixty-nine. Would you do with nineteen?
I'm good with nineteen.
Item number twenty?
Since Larry doesn't want ten thousand dollars.
Yep. Are you joking? Because I'm serious.
He said he didn't want it.
I'd like to reduce this to zero, because the next thing that's planned in there is the tennis court, and we don't have anything planned for that, so why stick in money? Let's find out how much it is and then say for it.
You got a plan.
That just cost you ten thousand. You should have taken the other ten, Larry, even if you could have.
Wait till next year.
Item number twenty-one, twenty thousand to the contingency, comes out of unsigned fund balance anyway, so this is.
Yes.
You okay with that?
Yes.
Item number twenty-two, this is to increase the number of heritage commission members from five until eighteen is the maximum that's allowed by the RSA. Request from the heritage commission.
And the, the original request was nine, which you can't date. So that's when Pat Jenkins suggested an alternate, and you already have alternates, so, so it's an additional alternate, it's not one alternate, you already have alternates.
Okay.
So I would just recommend putting a word additional.
Okay.
Otherwise, I have no problem with it.
Okay. So can you take twenty-two of this? Okay. All right, that's it for our articles.
I want to go back to the parish house one again.
Item number nine.
When you did the assessment for, when you had the contract with the assessment for the parish house, does that include moving it or not?
The assessing that we're having done is, doesn't include moving it.
Do you have a vision of how much it would cost? Because we're in violation, right, Karen?
No. What's that?
Mr. Tappan?
John Tappan, a member of the town center vision committee, and I was there when we toured the house with the assessor, and the directions to the assessor were to cost it both ways. The foundation does need repair, and we suggested with, just what we knew about it, is that it might turn out that it was less expensive and more reliable or more likely to be successful to just build a new foundation, pick it up and put it on a new foundation, rather than trying to repair the stone foundation that's under there. And so we asked them to look at both and which comes out better.
Thank you.
And we also pointed out that as it is now, it cannot stay where it is without some additional cost, because a new property line would have to be negotiated in with the church, and there would be costs associated with that.
That's true.
I think that answered your question, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll go full cost.
Because if you kept it, you either have to move it or you'd have to do a property line adjustment, and according to Mr. Banks, the church would not be adverse to a property line adjustment, but that's, there's costs associated with that, so. And I stand corrected by Mr. Tappan, so.
That then answered, thank you very much.
Hi, Rebecca Hawthorne, also a member of the ABC. So I have a question about Articles three and eleven. So I, my, is my understanding, from the many things I thought through, that the hope is to have two hundred thousand dollars to renovate the town hall, and that then would be met by funding. So we need to have that earmarked so that they'll give us the other two hundred, so we have the four hundred thousand dollars to renovate the town hall. But right now, we have a hundred and twelve thousand dollars that's sitting in the town building capital reserve fund, which could be used as part of that two hundred thousand dollars that we have to get. And right now, you're taking it from the town building capital reserve fund to decrease the bond you'd need for the new town center vision committee. If that bond fails, that hundred and twelve dollars is still just sitting there, but we're also raising another hundred and fifty to go into the town hall capital reserve fund. So what I'm not understanding is why we're not using a hundred and twelve for the town hall and only putting in thirty-eight into the town hall, the renovating town hall capital reserve fund, and having the bond be two point nine? That way we're not, it feels a little bit like a shell game. Like, hey, go, go for the town center vision committee and we're going to use this amount of money, and it's not much. But then additionally, we also need a hundred and fifty for the renovating town hall and another fifty in Article thirteen to also go into the town building capital reserve fund. So you're really not taking one twelve, you're putting, the net doesn't work out quite that way, and I think that looking at these things as all individual pieces is a little bit misleading. And I, and I, I don't know if you're, that you're, the new municipal building passed, in which case that hundred and fifty, if it passes, feels a little redundant, because we could be using the one twelve.
The other thing the board has to consider, at least I have to consider, is Mr. Bullock's building fails, the hundred and fifty thousand goes in for the town hall, what do we do? Because now we've got money to renovate the town hall, we've got these pesky staff people that are in there that can't be rid of, wants to renovate the building, so what do you do with them? And one of the things the TCBC was charged in terms of looking at, maybe we put them up to Archibasco or some other place and renovate the buildings, stick them back in. There's a building in Barrington, one twenty-five, I don't know if you'd like to travel up to Barrington, we know, we rent about sixty thousand a year.
Hey, I think the market basket is a good, is a good time.
I think that's something that, that we have to consider if the municipal.
They've got two, two empty storefronts there right now.
Yeah, Radio Shack has been going for seven years.
I think the TCBC kind of likes the car store one, because it has sufficient space, yes, just for free. It's something we have to consider, in terms of Ms. Hawthorne's, Ms. Hawthorne's suggestion, this, this, sorry, Ms. Hawthorne's suggestion is maybe that's something we can look at.
Well, it's, it's true. It's obvious.
The thing is, the hundred and fifty thousand is going to hit the tax rate this year, which increases the tax increase, and an extra hundred and twelve thousand on a bond is going to be a little bit.
A little touch, don't you think?
And I think one of the things people look at is how much is this going to affect me? How much is it going to cost me to do this particular thing? So something to consider.
How much do I expect of school?
Don't get me started on that.
Middle school.
Just a little clarification, isn't the hundred and twelve thousand dollar trust one that she's talking about for all the buildings? So it's for like if my furnace fails or the roof goes again, that's where that comes from?
You can still, but you could, so you could choose, but you, so you could choose it for that, you could choose it for the, the new municipal building, or you could choose it to renovate the town hall. You have choices.
Oh, absolutely, but that's what that fund is for, is for all the buildings?
I, I understand that.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Tappan?
John Tappan, a member of the town center vision committee. In order to get matching funds for renovating the town hall, you need to have your half set aside, and it would need to be specifically earmarked for that project. It would not be good enough to say, well, we have some money that we could use for it. Our CIP doesn't say that we plan to, but we could use it. So that's why you need to have the renovating town hall capital reserve fund, which is only, can only be used for the town hall. The other thing is that the hundred and twelve thousand that's suggested to be taken from town buildings capital reserve fund to go toward the office building, that is not listed in the CIP as a hundred and twelve thousand for that specific need. There are other things in the CIP, there have been things in there in the past that the board has said they're not going to buy, but they've still been listed, so that hundred and twelve is just one of those things that may come out of that fund of the, as I understand right now, about two hundred and twenty thousand that's available without, without next year's addition.
Can't we earmark it, though, by changing the work? Yes, I understand you seek earmarked, and I understand the fund is for many things, but if we're willing to take the hundred and twelve and put it towards a new building, can we be just as likely to take the hundred and twelve and put it towards renovating the town hall? And I don't know what we need to do to earmark it, but maybe we have a worker who says we're earmarking it. Now we've earmarked it. I mean, I'm sure there's some way to move it and to earmark it so that L chip will give us the money. But if we're willing to spend it on one thing, I'm just suggesting that we spend it on the thing, I'm just, as we spend it a different way. I think it's more likely to happen. it's more likely to happen.
We've never tried to take this money out of one capital reserve fund and put it into another capital reserve fund.
You can have a four years, two more articles.
One to take it out and the other one to put it back in?
Yeah, or something like that.
Because I think, Mr. Tappan's point is, is valid, because if we're going for L trip funds, they want to know that the money is earmarked, and that gets you supposedly brownie points, because you've already put up your share, they're more willing to, you know, fund you for the rest of it.
You have to earmark it.
Any other questions? Anything else for the board in terms of budgets or word articles or?
Not at this time.
Later.
I'm sorry?
Later.
Later. And just so everybody knows, on the thirteenth, we have a bond, uh, public hearing, that's first, I believe, and then we're going to have another budget hearing, so if you have other questions, they come up between then and now, um, you can come back, so. Anything else?
No, I also still need a vote on the default budget.
Okay. With the changes? Can we just read the bottom part?
Yeah.
Alright, the, move to, I move to accept the default budget for FY two thousand twenty-one as presented, that budget amount being four million one hundred and thirty-two thousand five hundred and four dollars, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Can I close the budget hearing now?
There's any others?
Close the public hearing for the budget. Now, Mr. Randon, you're up! That was like, what, an hour and something like that?
Could've gone home and got a beer.
Well, I'll try to make this short because it looks like you guys won't get home till midnight.
Some of us have to work today.
Uh-oh.
Is it you?
Yeah, who'd that be?
So see you Larry.
See you Larry. That's, that's extra from, from the, uh, the actual test. That we have a... Lou Randon, fourteen hour lane by the way. I'm trying to, I'm trying to shorten the, the presentation a little bit, I think, um, when the energy committee started looking into trying to get this building, um, assessed for energy efficiency, we were, uh, looking for someone who would do the blower door test, well, we were looking for a contractor that would do the blower door test and give us an estimate of what the cost would be for, uh, improvements. We weren't able to get someone to do both. Uh, we tried, uh, a couple of companies and we didn't find anybody, so, so we started with the blower door test, which was done in the spring, uh, we got the report in July that was in the middle of the solar project, and, um, everybody was so busy that we put that off. So, we, since then, we've, we've looked for the, the contractor part, who would, who would, um, give us an estimate. But I'll, I'll start talking about the actual test first, I don't know if anyone's had time to look at the, to look at the, um, report itself. There's two parts, the first part is just a summary, and then there's pictures with explanations. And the report part, um, basically, um, talks about getting, uh, a score of air change, air changes per hour, which measures how much the air is moving in and out of the building or the heat, in and out of the building. And, um, just to shorten things, I'm going to, uh, refer to this page that I just gave to you, I'm going to talk about, um, Andy Duncan, who is a professor at Lakes Region Community College, he gave us a presentation last year about energy efficiency. And, uh, in, in, right under, uh, the heading, uh, he says that the current residential energy code has a limit of seven point oh ACH, air changes per hour, fifty is the pressure, pascals I believe, for the buildings. So, so that's, that's the upper limit that you want to, the current upper limit that contractors are striving for right now, and this building came out at nine point seven four, I believe. So, um, it's not as efficient as, as it could be. I'm sure it's more efficient than the town hall or something else that's two hundred years old. But it, it's not perfect, basically, because there's not a, a sufficient thermal barrier, which I talked about in the past. So, we, we've asked, uh, Mr. Rando for more suggestions, and at the top I underlined his basic suggestion, which is says up, which, and he says oftentimes the best option is to move the thermal and pressure boundary to the underside of the roof, utilizing closed cell spray foam, but again, the significant, the costs are significant with that. In other words, um, right, just spray the foam right, right, right on, on, on the, on the back of the, the roof. And that's his recommendation. Andy Duncan has a few other ideas, uh, if you, if you looked at the pictures from the report, the infrared pictures, it shows air leaking from each one of these tiles, uh, those could be, be replaced with more energy, uh, with more, uh, with tighter tiles, but the problem is all the lights and all the, that has to all be sealed. In other words, if, if there's a little hole somewhere, that's where the air leaks out, he has a, he has a, uh, a storybook, would you be in a life raft that only had one percent holes? That wouldn't be effective, so it's the same way with the building, you have one percent holes, you're still going to leak quite a bit. So, um, I, I talked about the contractor, uh, the contractor that came to look at the building is Newell and Cratherne, uh, and Bill Newell, uh, actually came and spent about four hours looking, uh, and he looked at this part of the building and the, and the other part, the fire department, part. He hasn't, he hasn't given us a, a report and an estimate because he says that would take him another day. And, uh, he has contacted the, uh, the co-op, and, and, uh, by the way, his suggestion is to do the same thing, the spray foam thing, and he says it, it has to be done correctly for it to work, you can't have the holes. So, he has, he hasn't given me a price, uh, he, he has contacted, uh, the co-op, and, what I've done this fall is I've gotten our, uh, our heating costs for one year, uh, he wanted two, but one year's worth is, is in storage, I gave, another year's in storage, I gave him one year, and, uh, so he worked with that, he talked to, um, Joe Leeski at the co-op, and, uh, Joe Leeski thinks that, uh, we're almost, almost certainly, uh, qualified to get thirty-five to fifty percent. I would, my guess is that we'd be closer to the fifty percent, uh, rebates on the work. So, uh, basically, Mr. Newell is willing to come here and talk about a proposal, but he wants, he wanted to get some feedback as to whether you would even be interested in getting a proposal, because that would be like an extra day's work, and he's already spent at least a day on this. So, um, that's, that's the basic, that's the situation where we are now.
I'm a little confused with it.
Okay.
Are we going to get a piece of paper with a dollar amount on it and say, here's what it's going to take to spray foam the inside?
That's what I assume, that's what I assume, otherwise what would be the point, right?
Okay, but I think then we probably are going to want two.
Two, two...
Is there another company that also does spray foam?
There probably is, and the reason that he didn't want to spend the day on it is that he would be outlining everything that, that needs to be done, and then you would take that and use it for your RRP, and he spent two days with, for nothing, okay, basically.
So would, you do the sp, maintenance list, but also you had mentioned that like the door downstairs, do you do that stuff as well, or?
Yeah, yeah, they, they do everything, they, they're a big company, and he told me that this fall they did like a hundred and fifty houses in Newmarket, and they're a big company and this, this is what they do. Yeah, they're, they're a reputable company, so...
If we didn't get two, then we should at least get some, uh, recommendations, whatever, just talk to some past customers and see.
Yeah. Yeah, and, um, I think if you, if you listen to them and then you decided to do the RRP, at least you listened to them, you know? He just doesn't want to say, well, you know, we, we're not interested in it, so don't even bother.
I understand, to me it's kind of like the parish house, I, I don't have a clue what the cost is going to be.
Right, neither do I, and, and then, uh, an important part of that is, uh, the payback period, is it going to pay itself back in fifteen years, ten years? Also, right, it's definitely going to get rid of all your ice dam problems because you're going to have that insulation on the roof and the, and the warm air is not going to get through or melt the snow. Right now, you have air ducts with blowing warm air right in the, in the attic, and that's, that's, that's your reasons for ice dams.
I think it's worth having a plan, yes, it's obviously, we've made a major effort by changing the lights in here, we want to continue working this area to improve the building as much as we can.
The co-op will not give any, uh, any rebate money unless there's a decent payback period, they just won't, and, uh, they will prob, they will certainly audit the work that, that Newell would do.
If he would just give you a couple of names of companies he did, you know, that you could call?
I can get that, yeah, I can get that.
I think that's the least we should...
Oh yeah, I, I should have got, I should have done that before I was...
It's alright.
Yeah, so that's basically where it's at.
Well, thank you.
Should I call him and?
Yes, yes.
Okay, uh, and, you know, you, you've got a lot on your plate, so I'll coordinate it with Julie as, as to a little slower time.
Lou, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, do you have any sense in terms of how much this would be? Are we talking five thousand, we talking ten thousand, we talking a hundred thousand? What is the?
Well, I don't know, right? It, it's probably between twenty and thirty thousand, either after the rebates or before the rebates, I think it's maybe after the rebates, it would be between twenty and thirty, that's just my guess, it could be more.
So we're talking tens of thousands?
Oh yeah, yeah, well, it's a huge building, he's talking about the whole building, not just the side, the whole thing.
Because usually from the report, it's usually they do the vapor barrier above the ceiling, right?
Yes, yeah.
I think that's not going to work, I noticed some of the pictures where they breached even what they put in when they built the building.
Yeah, yeah, and it wasn't, it wasn't done by someone who knew what they were doing, obviously, and there's places with no insulation, just a little bit, um, the leak, you could, you could find someone to just do the door gaskets and, and stuff like that, and, and maybe tighten up some of the insulation, but to, to make it really efficient. But, see, I'm not an expert, so you're going to put, and he's spent a lot more time, Gary, I think he knows more than these people do, so, uh, you're going to get...
He does.
Yeah, and he has a lot of pictures, I, I don't know if you've got those too?
Yes, we got, very nice.
Yeah, so he, he seems to know what he's doing.
He got my vote.
Okay.
So if this building is nine point seven four, uh, the town hall must be at least thirty.
Must be.
I would think that the town hall, in terms of insulating it, would qualify for rebates too.
I would think so.
If that doesn't, I would...
You got a vote.
Thank you for you, for your, the work and the community's work.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Number five, um, all this is, it was going to be asking for money, but we decided not to ask for money, so we're just going to let you know there's an open house this Thursday from five thirty to eight. Light refreshments, there's going to be five stations talking about the municipal building, and also, uh, some information about the town hall, um, so come, you don't have to come for the whole thing, you can come for half an hour and get all your questions, you know, asked and answered, uh, and then you can leave, so, and the town staff have graciously volunteered to assist, and we have to twist their arm a little bit, I think, so, but thank you for them for doing that.
And police chief?
He twisted my arm, so, he's bigger than me. But thank you, yeah, so Mary Woodwood from the energy committee is coming to volunteer, Chief Donsfield has volunteered to talk about security and access, uh, Julie Glover, Denise Duval, and, uh, Joy Clancy are going to be in there talking about different things, and then, um, Linda and Liz, one of them, I think, will show up.
Bambi?
Well, Bambi's on the committee, committee members have to show up.
They have to show up.
But, Dawn, oh yeah, Dawn, I almost forgot, Dawn Quigley, Dawn Quigley's going to be there as well, um, so, good group of volunteers, hopefully people show up, hopefully everybody doesn't show up all at once and then leave, but hopefully, but... That's item number five, number six, can we go to town administrator?
I just wanted to remind everyone that we are getting forty-four thousand dollars, an estimated forty-four thousand dollars in fiscal twenty-one of additional state fees, because it's not unanticipated like it was this October, we can't really earmark it for anything, I just wanted to remind you that we're going to have an additional forty-four thousand in revenue, although I guess we can probably anticipate that we're still going to be down in recycling revenue, and also building permits are starting to fail a lot, so.
But that'll be calculated in when we estimate revenue for capital and tax rate as well. Great, thank you. Anything else?
Uh, just on the consent agenda, we should have removed, um, the manifest and the payroll because you, you signed those last week.
That's correct. So we're just doing A through E. You all set? Number seven, I move to accept the consent agenda as presented, items A through E only, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And are we still going into the public?
I think so.
Okay.
I think I have to change my mind for the conversation that I had earlier today, because we have other things we have to do, so...
Losing our audience.
Oh, I don't know. I don't want to sign this.
Oh, maybe we'll show up Thursday. I was waiting for that.
Is that blackmail? Thank you for assisting us. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. Donuts keep Julian and Denise safe.
Maybe we can hack some things out.
We, we also have a ulterior motive as well. Because if somebody gets out of hand, they're not going to do it without.
Get out of hand?
Yeah. You know, bites over the cookies or refreshments, you know.
哪种 refreshment you're talking about?
What kind of kind you like?
Hard cider?
I don't think we can do alcohol, Mr. Lou.
You might have a lot more people enthusiastic.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, probably the town hall employees.
We'll just have to go into Julian's little drawer, get her supply, her staff. Is that everything?
I don't know.
No minutes?
Well, we must have signed on.
You don't have to sign, but you'll remember?
That's right.
You good?
That's right.
Thank you.
Alright, I move into non, excuse me, I move to enter into non-public session. New entry, RC 91-A432, Section A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. DeCours?
Yes.
Vote the yes motion passes. Alright, and we're not sealing the minutes.
No.
They are what they are.
They are what they are.
Item number 10, miscellaneous unfinished business. Anything from the planning board?
No, the planning board's been fairly quiet. In fact, we're meeting on the night. What's going on the night?
That's the open house.
I know, we're meeting on the night.
Well, it starts at 5:30, so.
Oh, yeah, it's plenty of time.
Till 8:00.
Yeah, this just makes no difference. Just when I saw that, I was like, oh, he's going to leave. No, nothing's happening. It's fairly quiet.
Alright, anything else? Nope. I'm moving to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes.